Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Ingersoll?
Here.
Humphrey?
Present.
Stokenberry? Smith?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Cradoff?
Present.
Graham?
Present.
Howe?
Here.
And Chairperson Henning?
Here.
Perfect.
Thank you and welcome, everyone present and watching from home. Tonight's agenda consists of the meeting from the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Commission Meeting. Items two and five is the final plat, planned unit development site plan review for Tommy's Express Car Wash. Items three and six is the final plat and site plan design review for Flex Spaces Number Two. Items four and seven is the final plat and site plan design review for Blue Springs Business and Technology Park. Item eight is a community development annual report. Number ten is a community development monthly reports for January and February. And number ten, we're going to talk about the strategic planning boards and commissions night. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval for the consent agenda for the January thirteenth meeting. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is number two and five, which is the final plat PF zero one dash two five dash nine four six four and a plan unit, planned development site plan design review PD FS dash zero one dash two five dash nine six nine four six four for Tommy's Express Car Wash. At this time, I think staff has a presentation for us and Ms. Frye is ready. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. This evening, we have presenting of requests for the approval of a planned development, final plan, site plan design review and the final plat for Tommy's Express Car Wash, which is located at five oh nine Northwest Seven Highway. We did the rezoning, which was already approved for the planned development commercial and the entire development site will encompass zero point seven two acres. The proposed development features a four thousand five hundred and seventy-five square foot tunnel style car wash, which will be constructed in a single phase. The site currently has two access points that are along Northwest Seven Highway. The northern access point will serve as the entrance only, allowing right in and right in movements and will be clearly marked as an entrance, which is right here on the north end. The southern access point will be an exit only, which will restrict to right out movements only and will also be clearly marked with signage of exit. Additionally, the site plan includes a five foot eighty-eight compliant sidewalk along the property's Northwest Seven Highway frontage, which is required. The proposed building is classified as a pad site and previously approved modifications under the planned development allows for a reduced northern side setback of three feet. As a car wash, development is not required to provide parking stalls, however stacking spaces at the entrance are required. While only six stacking spaces are required and mandated by the UDC, the applicant has provided twenty-two stacking spaces. The site also includes two bicycle parking spaces, which meets the required standard for being off of a bike route. And then it has the fourteen standard parking stalls, eighteen feet by nine and a half feet wide, which will be used for the vacuum stations. There are five employee parking stalls and one ADA compliant parking stall. The internal sidewalk requirements are not met, however, at this building, it does not feature a pedestrian oriented public entrance and connecting a sidewalk to the surrounding infrastructure would not be required. The applicant has provided a final landscape plan, which does exceed the required number of plant units, representing a significant improvement to the existing lot. The applicant was previously approved for a waiver of the requirement to install a six foot tall solid privacy fence or berm with landscaping. Due to the site constraints, the approved buffer modifications are as follows. The two and a half feet on the north buffer, a four and a half feet on the east buffer, two and a half on the south and five feet to the west. The building will feature a mix of metal panels and CMU blocks with a color palette of gray, red and white. The design incorporates regulating and curved lines, giving a retro futuristic aesthetic. The applicant has been approved for the waiver of the transparency require of the windows, being the type of business and land use. Staff recommends approval of the planned development, final plan, site plan design review subject to the three conditions listed in the staff report. And additionally, staff will recommend approval of the final plat with the two conditions listed in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff from up here? Is the applicant here and would like to speak on behalf of their project?
Hi, my name is Rob Heisey. I'm one of the owners and franchisee for Tommy's in Kansas City. We're very excited about the project and we're happy to answer any questions, but I do not have any prepared remarks from the staff's presentation.
Any questions up here? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion up here from any commissioners? Questions or discussion? Here and none, I would ask for a motion for the final plat first.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I recommend we approve Final Plat PF zero one two five nine four six six with the two staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
We've got one, Chair.
Oh, you oppose?
Yes.
Okay, one opposition. And that, that passes. Next up is a motion for the planned development, site plan design review portion of this project.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Recommend to approve PD FS zero one two five nine four six three with the three staff conditions.
I have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. Mr. Cradoff? All right, and that passes. The next item on the agenda is items number three and six. Final plat PF zero one two five nine four six six and site plan design review SPDR zero one two five nine four six seven for Flex Spaces Number, or Phase Two. Ms. Frye, back to you again.
This evening before you is a site plan design review and final plat approval for the development of Flex Spaces Number Two, which is located at three four zero five Northwest Jefferson Street. The property is currently zoned light industrial district and is currently vacant. This development will include four new buildings, Buildings A, B, C and D, along with associate drives and parking areas. The final plat will establish two developable lots and one tract of land designed for a detention area and the total development area is approximately four point one nine acres. The applicant indicated that the proposed development would be utilized in a similar manner to the existing Flex Spaces, which is located to the north on Northwest Duncan Road, supporting storage residential warehouse use along with office and retail spaces. The proposed development meets all zoning requirements and complies with the non-residential design guidelines and the site design will incorporate corrugated metal siding, composite wood accents and floor to ceiling fronts, uh, windows, which are similar to Flex Spaces on the north side. The site will have a single point of access from northwest, or yes, Northwest Jefferson Street, with a cross access provided from the Phase One on the north side. The applicant is required to complete the half road improvements along the Northwest Jefferson Street frontage. An ADA five foot wide compliant sidewalk must be installed along the frontage of this lot and a public sidewalk will connect to the front entrance of Building D. The parking accommodations for this site is sixty-two parking spaces, all meeting the minimum size requirement of eighteen and a half feet in length and nine and a half in width. A temporary parking lot is on the east side, which will be the future development of Building E at a later time. And this temporary parking lot will provide an additional twenty-one parking stalls. There's also internal garage parking for Buildings A, B, C and D, which are all accessible via the overhead doors. A five foot ADA compliant sidewalk will extend from the public sidewalk along the North Jefferson Street near the drive access and will connect to Buildings C and D. There's an eight foot ADA compliant sidewalk, which are planned all around and shown on the plans of the exterior of the buildings. There are no pedestrian connections as for proposed for A and B, as that these will be primarily served for the storage residential warehouse land use. Stormwater management was originally designed and installed with Phase One, including an extended dry detention basin with additional capacity to accommodate this site. The proposed plans show private stormwater collection and conveyance to the existing basin. The applicant submitted the landscape plan that meets all of the UDC requirements and including all the buffer areas. A photometric plan was provided, however, this will be further looked at during the building permit process. All roof mounted and ground level equipment must be completely screened from view. Roof screens, ground level screens and enclosures must be coordinated with the building design to maintain a unified appearance. All signage will be reviewed administratively to ensure compliance with the sign code and required appropriate permitting. Staff recommends approval of the site plan design review with the four conditions and staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to the four conditions listed in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here.
Any questions for staff?
Any concern, sorry, Chair. Any concern with the pond, lake, whatever you want to call that, and Building C, it seems very tight there with the buffer there, if that's the right term?
Yeah, let me go back to the site plan.
Is that the retention basin? Detention basin?
Sorry.
Yep. Just for clarification.
So it's showing that it would be... It looks like...
Five feet? It's about five feet.
I can't even see the number.
Commissioner, it looks like to be about five feet off of the...
Four point eight feet.
Yeah, off of the border of that pond, but it will be a dry detention pond, so it will not have water in it unless there are rain events. Thank you.
Any other questions up here? The applicant here would like to speak?
Good evening. Patrick Joyce with Kimley Horn. I did not prepare anything specific for this, but I can stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
Your project's been very good so far and I'm glad to not hope you have much success with it. In retrospect, the last time you were here, we had a conversation about ADA compliant parking spaces. What ideas have you come up since then?
Well, we've, we've placed ADA parking stalls out in front of the more commercial buildings down the south side and that's kind of, and then also future, last time when we came in, Building E, which isn't part of this proposal tonight, we've added stuff on that conceptually for when we come in with that. So that's, that's where we've, we've left it.
I understand. Thank you.
In addition, I see there's one ADA compliant parking spot listed in front of Building C and also one in front of Building D.
Yes, that's right.
That's not the page I'm looking at, but the one I have shows the, uh, it's page sixty-nine in my packet, but it, it shows that they're there. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions or discussions from commissioners up here, I would ask for a motion for the final plat part portion.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, um, motion to approve Final Plat PF zero one two five nine four six six with the four staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
A second. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now moving on, I would ask for a motion for the site plan design review portion.
Chair. Uh, move to approve the, uh, motion for P, sorry, for the site plan design review SPDR zero one two five nine four six seven with the four conditions.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up is agenda items number four and seven. Final plat PF zero one two five nine four six eight, the site plan design review and SPDR zero one two five nine four six nine for Blue Springs Business and Technology Park. Again, I see Ms. Frye ready to go. Thank you.
This evening is a request for a site plan design review and final plat approval for the development of the Blue Springs Business and Technology Park located at two three zero five Northeast Jefferson Street. The property is currently zoned a light industrial and is currently vacant. The final plat of the business, of Blue Springs Business and Technology Park will consist of two lots containing a total of ten point seven zero plus or minus acres, excuse me, and two tracts of land containing three point seven two plus or minus acres. The development involves constructing a sixty-seven thousand five hundred square foot industrial building, which will be known as Building One, which will accommodate multiple tenants. The developer will be constructing internal roads, public improvements and a detention basin to serve this site. The proposed development meets all the zoning requirements and complies with the non-residential design guideline. The site design incorporates using the exterior with a primary featured tilt up concrete with varied colors and entrances will incorporate storefront style windows and metal canopies. The site includes three access points along the north side of Northeast Jefferson Street. A six foot ADA compliant sidewalk will be constructed at the west entrance of Building One, ensuring the connectivity to the northeast Jefferson Street and access throughout the site. Additionally, the plan shows a sidewalk extending along the north side of Lot One, which will facilitate future connections with future development phases. A five foot ADA compliant sidewalk on the west side of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street will also be constructed. The site conforms with all pedestrian access requirements outlined in the approved general development plan. Parking accommodations include fifty-eight parking spaces, all meeting the minimum size requirement of eighteen and a half feet by nine and a half in width. In front of the building, there are six parking spaces in front of each of the overhead doors. There are twenty-three parking spaces for the office, uh, to the rear and then there's also the six bicycle parking required, uh, based on the certain percentage of a highest shift of the building. Stormwater management will include an expansion of the existing stormwater basin. Trac A is designed as a tension easement for the Lot One and Two. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan that meets all the UDC requirements, including all the required buffer areas. A photometric plan has been provided, however, further lighting details will be reviewed during the permit, building permit process. All roof mounted and ground level equipment must be completely screened from view, which of the roof screens, ground level screens and enclosures must be coordinated with the building design to maintain unified appearance. All signage will be reviewed administratively to ensure compliance with the sign code and require appropriate permitting. Staff recommends approval of the site plan design review, uh, with three conditions and then staff recommends approval of the final plat with the two conditions and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Frye.
And the applicant is here.
The applicant would like to speak on behalf of their project.
Good evening. My name is Brian Ron, one thousand Northwest High Point Drive Lee Summit. Uh, this evening, I just want to thank you for your consideration of the project. We've been working on this and working with the city for several years and, uh, we are excited now to finally be moving forward um, for a project that we're going to be able to, you know, bring, you know, some new business to the city of Blue Springs. Uh, these are tilt up buildings, you know, quality architecture. You know, we're, we're just very excited about the project and more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions up here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions or discussions from up here, I would entertain a motion.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the final plat for Blue Springs Business and Technology Park PF dash zero one dash two five dash nine four six eight with the two staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the site plan design review portion of this project. Do I have a motion, please?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the site plan design review for Blue Springs Business and Technology Park SPDR dash zero one dash two five dash nine four six nine with the three staff conditions.
I have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. All right, moving on. We're done with the formal agenda items. We've got some internal stuff and I think, um, we've got an annual report from, uh, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, so while we're in March of two thousand and twenty-five, I think it's a good time to go back and reflect on what happened, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, going from January, uh, through December. All right. So yeah, I just want to go ahead and start off with some overall highlights. The city did experience positive growth in two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, city issued one thousand two hundred and seventy-four build, building permits in the year two thousand and twenty-four, uh, which was more than two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, overall permit numbers were down, uh, in comparison to the last several years, but the city did see its highest number of single family dwelling permits since two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, also the highest number of non-residential addition and alteration permits since two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we had eleven, uh, rezoning requests that were approved. Uh, we had ten preliminary plats and nine final plats. Uh, we had nine general development plans, six administrative site plan design reviews and nine, uh, site plan and design reviews. Uh, we had five conditional use permits that were approved. And again, we had one thousand two hundred and seventy-four building permits and we had two hundred and ten, uh, signed applications that were issued administratively. Uh, we also had three annexations that were approved in the year two thousand and twenty-four. And just to talk about population growth, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-four, uh, we grew, uh, by one thousand and twenty-one people to a total of sixty thousand five hundred and thirty-nine and that's a population growth rate of one point seven two. All right. And so I just want to zero in on some of the project showcases. Of course, you guys are familiar with the Blue Surf Water Park, Blue Surf Bay Water Park that is, uh, joins the Fieldhouse, state of the art facility, um, visible from a high, from the highway, just a, you know, a great showcase for the city of Blue Springs. A project that you heard about earlier, uh, Blue Springs Business and Technology Park. Um, also, you know, a nice, nice product to be delivered to the city. I want to show you guys the rezoning maps, so you've got kind of an idea of where that took place. All right, there we go. Um, so as you see, most of the rezonings occurred in what would be considered the north portion of the city, largely north of Highway forty. Uh, there were nine rezonings, zoning map amendments to the north and then two rezoning in what we call the south portion of Blue Springs, as far as this map goes. And, uh, just some other project showcases, uh, you know, we had a new Starbucks that went in on the south side of town. Um, just an elevation and a picture of that. We had the stairway, a mural and then the Life Unlimited sign. Um, again, two hundred and ten signs were, were approved administratively in the year two thousand and twenty-four. And kind of a breakdown of the neighborhoods in which we saw new homes. Cambridge Park had fifty-four, Eagles Creek had twenty-eight, Four Pillars had twenty-five, Eagles Ridge Estates, P R O, twenty-three, um, and then Edgewater at Chapman Farms and the Woodlands at Chapman Farms, K N A, at nineteen and fifteen, respectively. And then building permits issued by subdivisions. Um, up here on the northeast side by Duncan, quite a bit. Um, and then largely on the south side, as you guys know, a lot of single family subdivisions are being developed. Um, so naturally, that's going to be your largest, largest housing unit counts per subdivision. And then again, commercial construction across, uh, we know that, uh, Seven Highway is, is a, is a primary corridor of our city. So a lot of the, uh, new construction and commercial construction costs are going to take, uh, place along the major highways, um, through town. So, um, it's good to see that construction costs are, you know, work's getting done. And lastly, in the annual summary, I thought it was a good thing to point out that, you know, while building activity increased comparatively twenty-three, I think what's exciting is that the total construction cost of projects was about ninety-three million dollars more than it was in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, so overall, I think that's, um, actually, there's one more thing I want to show you guys. Let's see here. Make sure we get, um, so we just all want to know about new projects that are coming, maybe some that are already here or some that are on the way, uh, fairly soon. Small sliders, I'm sure you guys have seen that under construction. Ironwood's going to be a housing development, um, that should be on its way. Blue Springs Flex Spaces, bringing, you know, new flex office and retail development to the city. And then Colonial Gardens, just kind of an overview of their site and the different uses that are being, uh, offered there. Houdal Meadows, another proposed housing development, uh, located at the southwest corner of Wyatt in Litchford. Um, should be two hundred and thirty-one single family homes going in there with amenities such as a clubhouse and pool and then the Dutch Bros Coffee, uh, shop, which will be, uh, off Seven Highway. Um, it should be on its way fairly soon. Um, so I think this would be a good time to go ahead and stop. If anyone had any questions or anything they'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to assist. Any questions you might have?
Any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
In, in reference to nuisance property report, reports, can you give any data or differentiate what the, uh, report data was between twenty-three, year twenty-four?
The scope of this report does not have, uh, any code compliance related data in it. So at the, at the scope of this report, I would not be able to provide you any information pertaining to the twenty-four annual report at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
I have a comment unless anybody else wants to jump in there.
Um, one of the things that I have really enjoyed seeing over the last year is some color to the city. And I'm saying this just as a compliment and a suggestion for council and also staff as they meet with future developers is, um...
I have really liked the design standard and colors of the flex spaces on Duncan Road. It's different.
Sure.
You've got some nice smoked glass and some panel-looking really nice wood accent. I love the mural that we approved on the dispensary on Seven Highway over by Feldman's. I had a couple of friends tease me about that, and then after it went up, actually called me back and stated that they thought it looked really cool. Small Sliders is, is, I, I know these corporations are probably bringing their development colors to us, I'm just stating that I like it. And I would encourage it, I like the orange look. I, I love the design of the small sliders, I know that's their thing, but it's different. It's different than the traditional brick and mortar freestanding building or strip mall that, that we see. So those are my comments about that and something that's, even the Dutch Brothers, the, the blue mixed in with the dark gray and the light gray. It, it gives a, for me, more of a professional, what's the word I'm looking for? Cool look to the city.
I like it.
Yeah, that's the word.
Yeah, good word.
So that's my comment, anybody else?
All right. Chris, I understand you also got some numbers for us on the last two months.
Yeah, let's, let's go on down to the monthly report. I believe we've got January and February combined here. So as you know, you know, the winter months kind of cool down a little bit, and then as, as we go into the spring and the summer and the fall, the numbers get increasingly, you know, larger. So we started out with eight single-family detached home permits in January, compared to eleven last year with a total permits of seventy-six in January twenty twenty-five. So you know, really, you look at these compared to twenty-four and twenty-five, pretty, pretty similar numbers overall. You know, about the same inspections. You know, I think we did a little less than construction cost in January twenty twenty-five compared to twenty twenty-four. But you know, that's, you know, just averages out over time. Code cases, fifty-three overall, most, most of them fell on the public safety realm. Most common code cases, nuisance inspection, no surprise there. All right. And projects, we did have Tommy's Car Wash, the rezoning, the P D C, the S P D R and the preliminary plat that went through planning commission and city council in January. The target alter, master sign plan also went through planning commission, as you guys know, last month. And then Target went through administratively for it, for an administrative site plan and design review. Not too many signs, of course, we're getting going on that, though. And then February, few more, uh, single-family dwelling permits, going to keep getting up each month as we go into the year. A higher square footage, construction costs are going up, inspections are going up. So we're starting to see the, the busyness of the permit and the inspection season, especially now with March. Again, public health and safety, most common code enforcement activity, trash, citizen complaints. And then we have the Dutch Bros final plat went through, they rescinded the old ordinance and approved the correct, corrected final plat that went directly to council, that was approved on February third, and that was given a new ordinance. And so that's January and February, and I just expect more activity and excitement to come in the, in the coming months. Any other, any questions for the monthly reports?
Thank you, Chris.
I have one, Chris.
Sure.
Since you don't have the, the data on the nuisance reports that I asked you about, can you look into that and provide that for us and let us know what the difference is in the past two years? If we've made any improvements or if we need to make any?
Commissioner, are you specifically asking for the amount of code case complaints we've gotten in terms of trying to measure whether we've made progress or whether we've just received more complaints?
Measure the progress and, and see how you've, how you've dealt with it in the last couple of years.
Sure, we can, we can bring that information to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, got that noted. Any other questions from any of the commissioners, chair, anyone else?
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Mallon, a question?
Yep.
When we were hearing from Tommy's Car Wash tonight, Ms. Fry mentioned that the UDC stated that it requires six parking spaces for something like that. We know six would never work. How old is the UDC? And yes, I've just been there.
The UDC was adopted in twenty fifteen, so it's not too terribly old. We've made a couple of adjustments over the years to some of our parking requirements. One of the UDC requirements in twenty fifteen stated you had, you couldn't have more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the required parking. So it put a, basically a parking maximum on there, so that some of the large box stores don't just put, you know, a sea of parking out there, we put a maximum on that. Since I have been here, we also had a section in the code which, for certain land uses, like an entertainment complex or, or certain land uses, were very difficult to, to determine the parking requirement. We allowed what's called a Schedule C parking memo, which is essentially that user's real-world example or analysis of how many parking spaces are actually going to need. There were only a few land uses that used to be allowed to utilize that. But back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, we opened that up to every land use in the city. And so throughout the process, if a, you know, specific user comes in and says, I know your code requires X for parking based upon what I'm categorized as, they can provide us a memo that's, that's supplied by a traffic engineer and signed off on that says, however, based upon our specific business operations and our hours that we're going to be open and all of these factors, we believe we need this amount of parking. And then that would come before the planning commission or go to the city council. And I think that's helped us to take care of some of those variables where our code may overpark certain areas. For example, a mini storage that you typically see requires like one parking space per five units. So, and those units have gotten really small over time. And so if you have two hundred units, you, you need a lot of parking. When in reality, people don't go to mini storage that often. They go there, they're there for a half hour, and then they leave. And so that's been one of those tools that we've implemented. But the city is going to be undertaking a new comprehensive plan later this year after, as we'll discuss here in a moment, after the city council goes through their strategic planning process. Then closely on the heels of that, we'll follow with our comprehensive planning process. And what typically happens is after that is done, or kind of in conjunction with that, then the city looks at where we need to adjust our code. And so I think that is something that can come up, is whether our parking requirements are out of date for certain uses or, you know, whether we're not requiring enough or we're requiring too much. And so I think throughout the next year, that's something we can definitely look at. But it has not been in-depth looked at since twenty fifteen. But we've also put in place some, some other things to help right-size parking when it's appropriate.
Thank you. As for the question about the codes numbers, while I respect that question, I would ask that the answer just be handled administratively via email.
Okay.
We, as a planning commission board, that does not fall anywhere underneath what we do here. It's a completely legitimate question, I just see no, no needs, reason or need to bring that up publicly at a meeting. So if you just email that response and cc myself on it, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
There was one more thing we were going to talk about, the strategic planning boards evening.
Yes, this is just a reminder that you all should have received an invitation from our city clerk or city, or assistant city, assistant to the city administrator Cheryl Morgan. Regarding, all of our boards and commissions are being invited to participate in the strategic planning process. That is Thursday, March twenty-seventh, from six to seven thirty at the Adams Point Golf Club. And it's, will be put on by our consultant who's running the strategic planning process, Barry Dunn, and is your chance to help provide input into the strategic planning process. And the strategic planning process being done by city council right now is aimed at helping the city council and, and the city provide a roadmap for the future in terms of vision for the city, how we want to function as an organization, how, and, and part of that is neighbor, or stakeholder community feedback. We want to hear from residents, stakeholders, boards and commission members about what direction they see the city going in and what direction they would like to see the city going in. And so as part of that strategic planning process, there are these public meetings, one of which is directly aimed at all of our boards and commissions. And so I've been asked to encourage you all to attend, and I do know that staff might be there at the beginning, but we may be asked to leave so that your feedback to the consultants is unfiltered and is not influenced by anybody in the room. And so I think it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity, I think it's a very important thing and, and undertaking the city is doing. I think it will help provide guidance to our comprehensive plan, which you all will be heavily involved with, to help us map out growth and land use and development over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And well, it may seem simplistic, but help us figure out where the Blue Springs needs to go in the next, as, as we want to grow up, what do we want to be when we grow up? And, and in terms of development, that specifically relates back to the planning commission. And so I think your, your input is very valuable, and I encourage you to attend.
One of my fellow commissioners reminded me before the meeting started that that's Royals opening day, so.
It is, it is. It is also the same evening as the candidate forum, and so there will be a tight turnaround if you want to do both. But I will just let you know that I will be there at the beginning of that event to, to help welcome you there and make any introductions to other boards and commission members or council members that you may not know. So I, I would, will at least be there to be a friendly face, and then we'll be leaving shortly thereafter. Yes, it is a busy night.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, the rest of the staff present.
We would like to get a picture.
Oh, yes.
Because if you noticed in the annual report, it said.
Our annual, I haven't put this the sporcode on since last year.
We'll do that immediately following.
Yes, please. So don't run out, let's grab a picture or two. Any other business from up here? Or out there? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.